Well, we'll get cranking since it is time. Thanks for sitting down at least two sections. It's better than sprawling out and I'm still got people that I'm missing behind the big screen, so we're going to figure that out because that's weird. Welcome. I think there are likely some introductions to be made here with some folks who are attending town hall for the first time. And those of you, well, introductions first. Mike, you'll go first.
So, this is Delia Rodriguez. She is going to be the new coordinator of college and career readiness, replacing Laura McPray. So, running kids in college, high school competitions, and just doing a lot of the K-30 connections. Has a lot of her experience in the RAC average.
Yep. Yay. So, she's going to be, she's not yet, she's going to be the new, like, when does she actually get to be the new? Because I think you're working already, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but still, she is the new. And was at a function with D-155 where we had some teachers over already this week, so welcome. Someone else?
Okay, so I'm here to introduce Cynthia Esen, who is our newest academic advisor in the advising center. So, this is Cynthia's first week here. She comes to us from Mount Mary University in the suburbs of Milwaukee and is going to finish in a graduate school at UW Milwaukee. We had a great pool of applicants and I remember when I did the reference check for Cynthia, they gushed about her and the thing that sold us, they said, "Our office always smells like cupcakes."
Nice. Welcome. So, yes. I want to transfer to Missouri State when I finish here. And I'm taking a pottery class now and I'm wondering if it'll be used for a math credit. Can you help me add it all? Yes? You'll help me or yes it will? Okay, haven't taken that course. Cool. Welcome. Glad to have you. Others?
Is anybody here for my team? Oh, this is Bob Lynn, the new IT project manager down in.
Yay. Welcome.
Information, whatever. Sorry, if there's anything else I can do to help.
Nice to meet you. Welcome. Anyone else? So, yes ma'am?
Would Dimitris Robinson?
Who are you and why are you here? Hi, I'm Kathryn Jones.
Is Dimitris Robinson or Linda Gurley in the room?
I don't see Dimitris. I don't see, no. So, we can trash talk them. Go ahead, what do you need to say about them?
Okay, so, we're going to go ahead and introduce Linda Gurley, who is our new admin assistant one in career services. She comes to us by way of temporary positions in career services for mandated programs and Shaw. So, we are delighted to welcome her in a permanent role.
Fantastic. Yay, welcome. I've met her yesterday, today. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, there's a new student successfully.
Would you like to do the introduction?
I think I presented myself last time I came.
Oh, well, yeah. That's okay. Anyone else? So, for the new and for the existing, I'm going to say it now, so when we get to this point later, at the end of the time, and we really don't have much, a huge agenda today, I will ask folks if they have questions. And recently, I've been getting a lot of stone-cold silence. As we begin to head into an election season, right? Think of your traditional town halls, which is, that's what this is called. People get thrown out of town halls, right? They stand up and they start saying crazy stuff and somebody has to invite them to leave. I don't want that necessarily, but think about if there is something that you want to ask about or discuss among ourselves. That's what this time is for. So, I'm giving you that advance notice. If something comes to mind that you're wondering about, this is an opportunity for that, okay? Fair enough. One of the things that we do, again, for folks who are new, is we have an opportunity to just share kudos if somebody wants to do a shout-out about somebody who has particularly displayed the stuff that we are made of here. This is a chance. I will say that, as a reminder, we have a kudo system where you can online go on and do this. And so, sometimes, we're just not fast on the drawl at 2:45 in the afternoon, but you get back to your desk and you say, "Ah, I wish I had given a shout-out to so-and-so." Go online and do it online. We forget about those things, but please, take a moment and express your gratitude to somebody. Even if you're doing it here, you can do it there. But that said, anyone? Yes, ma'am? Wait, wait, wait. New people don't get to do this. Next? Yes, please.
So, I just want to give a shout-out to your HR department. Our HR department here is absolutely amazing, Pat. Thank you so much. I haven't felt this welcomed in a new position ever, so I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Wait till Mike lets you actually start your job. Then it's going to be amazing. You know, we're hearing that consistently and so, things that you hear over time consistently, you tend to believe more. And we are being really intentional about some of these things. And the people who are sort of carrying out those intentions, Pat and team, we really appreciate it. Thanks for the feedback. Somebody else? Yes, sir?
Jessica Shad, because she's helping Tom and I navigate a lot of new things and she's really, she's helped me through every day and every week since I've been there.
Okay.
Unbelievable job she does.
Oh, that's great. Yeah. And those who, Jessica's not...
She's probably downstairs.
Yeah, okay. So, when you run into Jessica, let it be known to her that folks gave a shout-out to her because it's always nice to hear it in person. And you could go online and do a kudos as well. You're late? Do you have an excuse? You were, no, you were raising money for the college. That's always your excuse, every time you're late. "I was raising money." Yes, ma'am?
So, it was actually perfect timing because my kudos was for Jessica Rizza and the entire People in Need Committee. The People in Need Forum was phenomenal. So, congratulations. It was a great day. Thank you.
Thanks to everybody who cleared out the gym. I know that that was work to come up with the rescheduling and just figuring it out, but it sounds like I was unable to be there, was at a wedding, but it sounds like it was a great setting to do that and probably will become a permanent spot, just in terms of room to roam. So, thanks, Jessica, and your team. Yeah. Somebody else? Yes, ma'am?
I'm going to stand up because this is a kudo for everybody. Thank you all so much for sending students our way. We gave over, we repurposed over 365 blinders in the first two weeks of school. So, we saved the students a ton of money and we saved the college a ton of money plus a lot of easily used supplies. So, thanks to everyone who gave us stuff, repurposed stuff, and sent students our way.
Fantastic. Yep. Someone else?
So, my back home, sorry.
Yes?
It's me again.
Hey, hey, you.
Kudos to Pat Callis and Lily O'Connell. They have been partnering with other agencies in the county to develop the Disabilities Job Fair. It happens tomorrow, the first one ever in the county.
Cool.
Welcoming 14, 15 employers to the event.
Okay. There or here? Shaw or here?
It is at Shaw.
Okay, great. Great. Now, that's about two hours away as the crow flies?
Yes, walking.
Exactly. About two hours, that sounds right. Cool. That's fantastic. Thanks for sharing that. Amy?
I was just going to piggyback on what Kim said. As you mentioned, we had District 155 teachers here on Monday. As we toured them, they were so impressed with that idea that they immediately took it back to their school and they're hoping to do similar for their students.
Great. Great, great. The foundations involved in the Hall of Fame or not? Do you guys, are you guys connected to that process of the selection or is that totally athletics?
Athletics.
It is all athletics?
Athletics.
Okay, is athletics represented here?
Not tonight.
Yeah, no. A great group of Hall of Famers came in last night and were inducted between women's and men's basketball games. Sharp people who had exemplary careers athletically but have gone on to do really cool things. A middle school phys ed teacher, we were talking about her getting more students from Woodstock over to see the Science Center. That's what made me think of it. But really good ambassadors of the college who were glad they're out there talking about the school. And they had really nice things to say, both about their coaches, the athletic department, but the college, so. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Kudos to Maria Tatum and Paul Hamel. I came with the American Association of University Women. Maria did an amazing job of tour and Paul did a presentation in the front door. And the rest of our, then we had a meeting following it and all they talked about was how, we didn't get anything done. They were so excited by what they learned at MCC.
Cool.
And they want to come back and tour some other areas.
Nice.
It was just great and we really appreciated it.
Oh, good. Nice. Somebody else? Yes, ma'am?
What was the great job to Melissa Sanchez and Sherry Ridge for initiating and coordinating the student mentoring program? They had 27, 29 students complete the program and that's true dedication because that means that she also, they both have to recruit 29 mentors and that includes faculty, staff, administrators across the campus. So, they've done a great job.
Cool. That's wonderful. Somebody else? Yes, Tom?
For those that aren't new, I started in December and I had the opportunity last week to go visit the VITA tax locations, both here on campus and then Friday night out in Harvard. So, just recognize Anne Mascaro and her work and her volunteers. They had a classroom full of people line up last Wednesday or Thursday night at 4:00 to come in at 5:30 to get their taxes done. And then, I think it was 5:30 or so Friday night out in Harvard, they had people lined up there and had a group of volunteers to help in it. It just, it was impressive to me to see the work that they're doing and the people that need the help were just overwhelmed with gratitude. So, if you see her, you know, compliment her because it's a huge thing that they're doing.
Yep. Yep. Thank you for mentioning them. Somebody else? Yes, ma'am?
So, I just want to say, as you know, I'm new. I've only been here for week three, so things are going good. But I don't know who to compliment, but I just want to state, I was here on Saturday. I happened to come in and go in on the tax. They were lined up on Saturday and I think I was here around 11:00 in the morning. There were huge lines on the first floor of A building waiting for the tax preparation. But as you went toward the cafeteria, we had the robotics that was going on with the high school students in the gym. And I just want to say, you know, it was so nice to see, you know, McHenry's so busy. The hard lot was fuller than what it was on Friday afternoon when they left, you know, in that sense. So, I just thought, what a great thing that McHenry's doing all this and being a pillar in the community and helping out the community in that sense. So, I just want to say, you know, I'm really happy to be here.
Oh, yeah. And it's nice for you to notice and this is not hazing, okay? But one of the things we like to ask new people to do is to bring a friend who has like $3 million. Because we need, we're going to need, we're going to need a second gym. We're going to need an activity, practice gym, because as these things continue to happen, the demand on our facilities will increase and we want to be more available, but we still continue to want to run an athletics program. And so...
Well, next time I see Bill Gates or...
Sure. Yes, the fact that you know him by name, that's a start, right? Yes. So, but no, it is exciting and it does continue to press on us in terms of how long can we go trying to make, you know, use of a gym that we're also turning into a multipurpose, you know, big space for these kinds of really necessary events. So, that goes for others, not just you. Anybody else who's got a million-dollar friend? See Brian. Yep. Anybody else?
On giving, I will send a kudos to all of our employees. Our employee giving campaign, we had some goals. We had 33 new employees.
Ah, that's great.
25 new employees in the campaign. We had 100% of our, after our president's cabinet give, we had 73 or 75% of administrators giving all record highs for us since I've been here. Raised $15,000 of additional giving.
Wow.
That's just through the end of the year, so that's, we take the, that's not all payroll deductions. That's one kind of jazz, is giving through events. And then, on the payroll deductions, we project that out through June 30th, our fiscal year. So, just a really successful campaign.
Yep, that's great. That's great. Thanks.
Hopefully, not a lot of pressure, not a lot of, you know...
It seemed celebratory to me. I mean, I don't know what everybody else's experience was, but I, you know, I came from a place where Purdue boasted 100% response for United Way, which meant somebody would come and knock on your door. Now, you didn't have to necessarily put anything in the envelope, but you had to return the envelope, but over time, that became really pressure-filled and less celebratory. I think I saw an awful lot of people really excited to be giving on that day of giving for the college, so, yeah.
And kudos to Katie because she really kind of ran that campaign and was out and about talking and so, she took it with her. So, yeah, it was just, it was exciting for us. We have, during that fall, during employee giving, we have so much going on starting in October, like so many events, and so, that's not at the top, so to get that kind of response, yeah, it would really happen. So, thank you all.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am?
Can I get you back on to Katie? I had $5 in my pocket as I was walking by and I said, "Here you go." She's like, "Oh, come take a picture."
Oh.
No, no, no. I took my $5. Like, the next week, I think I got a card for her hand written.
Yeah.
Two pages.
Yeah.
Like, it went on and on about how much she's grateful for this $5 gift.
And I'm like, "Katie, that's really nice of you to have to do that."
She comes back from the New Year, "Here's another one." Three pages. No, she am grateful and thank you and guess what, all you're doing and everything.
I'm like, "Katie, it's $5."
It offered, no more thank you part.
Yeah. Yeah. Had you known, you would have given her the change too, right? Yeah, like 60 cents in change.
I'm going to get over there and give her more money.
I'm going into my purse. Yeah. Oh, that's great. Somebody else? Yes, ma'am?
So, you know, working with admissions and recruiting, I work with new people all the time coming in, seeing the college for the first time. And it just, every single time, I'm just very impressed by how many improvements we're making and how everything looks. And so, I get to see that excitement every day when people are impressed. So, even though we're going to go through even more construction, renovation, it's totally worth it and I can see that it's really making a big difference.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, that is a nice segue, but before we segue, any more kudos? Yeah, to see the plastic, the Vis Queen up again this week, it's like, here we go again. A218 just got gutted. And what you immediately notice is how bright that space will be once you have mostly glass in the front. And then, all of the fantastic windows facing into the Zen Garden, which you just didn't see because they were covered up with the temporary offices. But that is going to be, it's a big space, all designed for students with a different kind of vibe and feel than the Sage Center, which has become a rockin' place. But rockin' isn't always great if you just need to sit down and go over some notes or quietly meet with a group of your classmates or with somebody who's just trying to help you out navigating things. It's going to have a student success purpose. It's going to become one of our hubs for our Title III attempt to match services to students right where they are, but it's going to be a beautiful space. And the Zen Garden will never have had a better viewing than right across there. So, it's exciting, but more dust, right? More noise. And then, you know, right down the hallway is going to be noise and disruption galore. But to imagine that our admissions will truly seem like admissions, you walk in and it'll be clear, this is where you start. And the registration area will be clear. You can get your work done here in a really, interpersonally effective way. And then, to have disability services brightly identify, this is where you come to begin to look at accommodations or get support. It's a, it's going to be great. And you look at advising and just what tearing out a brick wall does, right? Just what creating a view in there that looks less claustrophobic or cave-like, it makes a difference. And I think you're right, over and over, people are saying it just feels really different in here. I have gotten to be in a couple of our renovated classrooms. I'm trying to get into one or two classes a week for the whole semester, mainly so that I can just saturate myself with our core delivery. I want to, in this semester, saying, I feel like I've, you know, soaked up a little bit of our instruction, our teaching, because that's why we're here. And I encourage you to do the same, maybe not, you know, as aggressively as I'm trying to do it, but get into a classroom sometime. But in our new spaces, right? I was in one of our new teaching spaces and you talk about comfortable and the faculty are already really facile with the technology and so, they're throwing up videos and they're, you know, using the space to the best possible use. So, it's exciting. Yep. But with that comes dust, with that comes noise. The bulk starts in March, Bob?
March 23rd.
Yep. But A218 is going and going strong and the bookstore also starts around then?
Yeah, it starts March 23rd, but we're going to have to do the physical relocation. That's going to be a little tight because we have a very limited window, but yeah, it starts March 23rd.
Which will be here before we blink. But you talk about folks who, again, even if they were here a year ago, right? They'll walk in come the end of next summer and say, again, it feels very transformative. That's exciting. Interior signage is also going to make a big, big impact and that begins really soon as well. Christina?
Yeah, they were hoping to start this week. They are still in the preparation, so we should start seeing folks around within the next week or two. It'll take several weeks, building by building.
Fantastic. It's going to make an impact. So, those are exciting. Wanted to remind folks about a couple of speaker series. Christine Grella is doing her next part to the Faculty Speaker Series, February 20th. This one is about, I forget, what's it about? Seriously.
Let's talk about sex.
Oh, made to say it. Yes, it is. And it's going to be, it's going to be good. And Christina, Christine has sort of big shoes to fill because the first two have been fantastic, but we're expecting the exact same thing. And so, if you haven't been to one of these yet, it's fun because people from the community come in and they're kind of blown away by our scholarship, but also our inspiring instruction. So, yeah, feel free to take advantage of that. The forefront series through Cal, we had a great first, the same weekend as the People in Need. We had some folks come in and talk about lean farming, had a great crowd. The next one is coming up, the, when is the?
The last Sunday.
February 20, oh, yeah, the last Sunday. All right, great. And you can go online and see the whole series, but these are some regionally recognized, in some cases nationally recognized speakers that we brought in just for this first spring of doing a speaker series around the Center for Agrarian Learning. So, I think they'll be of interest even if you're not doing small farming or entrepreneurial farming. I mean, you were saying, Tom, it was fascinating stuff even though that wasn't exactly your area of focus.
No, it was a great turnout too, like 60 farmers and I think, Sherry, I can't see if she's here.
No.
But she had them raise their hand and there were 50 or 60 farmers in the room. About a third said they were from McHenry County.
Yep.
About a third said they were from Illinois and another third was from out of state.
Yep.
It was just tremendous to be, you know, Sunday morning and they were here.
Yep. And that's one of the things that I think you'll pick up when you come to these is because they have more of a broader focus, you're going to run into some very interesting people doing some really interesting things, because when you start talking about micro-farming, organic farming, entrepreneurial farming, recreational farming, there's really some fascinating people trying to make a go of that and we're going to continue to see people from all around. Let's see, were there any other, any other speaker-type events that I don't want to miss? Okay. Let's see. I had several people send me in things that they wanted to make sure we noted. I'm just going to read this one the way it came in. Reminder that regular hand washing goes a long way in preventing the spread of germs and encouragement at this time of the season when there are lots of bugs going around. All right? So, wash your hands. This Friday night, we are getting an award from Harvard for the Outstanding Business of the Year. The college is getting that award. And it is to acknowledge the great work that's been going on at Harvard for years in terms of us holding classes there, but recently, our work together with the Harvard School District around our Upward Bound Grant has been just really exciting. I asked Renee to be here to just share, they just submitted their annual report to the feds. He had a lame excuse about a kid being born or something. I don't even know. You know, you get these excuses and you just really wonder. Renee had a baby, right? Has it already come? Is it about to come? Does anybody know?
Little girl.
Yeah, little girl. Whose name is?
Stella.
Stella is a great name. So, Renee couldn't be here, but he gave me just some of the highlights of their outcomes. The federal government has stringent outcomes when you get a trio grant. They want you to do ambitious goals and then they want you to meet them. 100% of the graduating seniors in the academic year 18 and 19 who are in the program successfully graduated and are currently enrolled or attending post-secondary education. 60% of seniors have successfully enrolled. These are current seniors and are currently taking classes at MCC. So, even though they're seniors there, they are applied, enrolled, and taking courses as they prepare for the next stage. 40% have enrolled into other four-year institutions. That's one of the keys to the trio grant is we don't only feature MCC, we feature education. And so, a lot of the cool things that they're doing are getting to go to colleges and universities around the region to just get immersed in the feeling of being a college student. Now, that includes MCC and a bunch of those folks are going to come here, but they're just getting the spark to go to college. 42 of the 62 students have maintained a 2.5 GPA or better. That's about two-thirds of them and that's above what our goal was for this group. 62 participants have completed their current grade level, moved on to their next respective grade level. That's 100%. Every one of those folks are making their way through Harvard. The individual stories that Renee tells me are the ones that you can sort of imagine, but then when you hear them spoken by the students, it's touching because they talk about, you know, "I'm surrounded by people who want me to succeed. I've never had as many people pulling for me. I never really thought it was possible until now. I didn't even think about college until now. My parents have always been supportive, but they haven't had really a clue as to how you even go to college. They've already, they've always said, "Hey, we're supportive of you going," but they have no money and they don't really know how you do this." And so, over and over, we are enrolling first-generation or low-income students in this program and they're getting exactly, exactly what they need in terms of just that complete, you know, blanket of support that says you're going to make it. A couple of things he mentioned, we got a $40,000 STEM grant award to be, so in 2018, we got the award. 25 of the Upward Bound students took week-long classes in computer animation and web development at MCC. They took a multicultural trip to Milwaukee, University of Milwaukee, to the museums. They stayed at a college and really got an extra spark in terms of the STEM fields and careers in that area. They've been doing after-school tables. They started a Fellas Forum just for guys to come together on a weekly basis and talk about whatever. When we got this grant, we had a sense that we were going to make our mark with this[1776.94] When we got this grant, we had a sense that we were going to make our mark with this particular group of people in Harvard, and we're making it. And I think that's a big part of why they're recognizing us this year. We also are doing an MCC 101 class specifically for Harvard, at Harvard, although we bring them out to our campus frequently. But Laura Powers has been heading that up, and I met with them when they were on campus. Did anybody else meet with them? On a Saturday, they came over, right? An amazing group of people. And you stood around in a circle and introduced yourself and sort of, what do you want to do? And these weren't folks who were saying, oh, I don't know, I guess I just want to go to college. Person after person, I want to be an engineer. I want to be, you know, a doctor. I want to be a physical therapist. I want to be a chef. I want to be whatever. But they had career goals in mind, and they were bound and determined to make it happen. They were an exciting, you know, world changer kind of bunch of people, right, Don? I mean, I was blown away by their confidence. I mean, you walk up to students here just in general, and sometimes you get that sort of a hesitancy, like, I don't really know why I'm here, but I'm here. Not these folks, right? They were already very purposeful, and it's because of the work that Laura and others were doing to get them prepared. So it's a, it's a very cool grant. We think the Title III grant is going to start having the same kind of outcomes as we implement some of those big, big goals that we're doing. But kudos to everybody who's been a part of the work in Harvard that results in us getting a nice little award Friday night. That is, I think that's what I had. Now, those questions that I prepped you, that this would be a great time to ask if you had them, go. You have a question?
I have a question. Can I say something?
Yes, you certainly may.
So I brought this up in the faculty meeting. Those of you that don't read the employee newsletter, because I know everyone does every day. Tarte Bistro will be opening Wednesday, February 19th. We are taking email reservations now. Don't email me. Email Tarte Bistro. There is a maximum table size of six. The explanation is in the newsletter. But we'd be happy to see a lot more faculty there. So we just finalize the line list, and the menu will be updated that we open.
Cool.
And I don't know if everyone knows, the night of the president's, another person who did on the opening night dinner, they did, what was it, Brian, 700, 700, just from opening night.
Nice.
So some of it for the intent just on that.
Oh, that's great.
We got a reputation now.
Yeah, yeah. Great food, great service by students, great idea. It's a delightful evening, so, yep. Now, questions? Back to them, questions? Or comments? Yes, ma'am?
Where is the bookstore relocated during construction?
B-16667.
So the, right around the corner from there, that meeting space, it will be in there. Yep. And everything will be half off to keep the traffic going.
No, it won't.
What'd you say, Christina?
No.
But I just said it. But I just said it. I think these are being recorded, too, aren't they? It won't be half off, but there will be incentives to come around to 16667. Yep. Other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Is there more of a sense, now I know that we have the hubs coming with the Title III, but is there more of a sense that Christine's here and like what else is happening, and when, what's the timeline for things that has to go quick, right?
Well, it's interesting, sort of yes and no. It doesn't have to go quick in terms of, some of the things that were in formation that I think made us successful in getting the grant were things, initiatives that we had already started. And so we are able to report on continuing progress of certain things, like guided pathways, for instance. There's a whole lot of work that was beginning and emerging that will now be culminating, but it already was in progress. And so it would be hard to even stop those things, because we were bound and determined to do it. Other things, construction will happen sequentially, like 218. Well, we were going to do that regardless. Now, we get to funnel some resources, but also purpose that towards that goal. I do know that there will be a, I don't know what you want to call it, a steering committee, a task force, a group of invested, critical players brought together soon to begin to sort of get up to speed, seek input, and begin to sort of guide the next steps. And so it is rolling. We want to give her a little more time. But I think if we were, if we were talking to the feds about that particular grant right now, we would be right on track. Just because, you know, they would say, okay, so these things that you were doing, you're continuing to do, and even beginning to step those up. So it's a good question, because it does feel like a little bit of a silent period. But soon, when that task force, that group comes together, they'll get a full dive and then begin to work on some of the other initiatives. Yeah, that's a good question. Thank you. Somebody else? Yes, ma'am?
One of the parking lots slated to be resurfaced?
I don't know. What's the next one, Bob?
The next one is the C Lot, and that's going to be upcoming. The one project that we have, that Access Roadway, the one that's going to be funded mostly by the State Department or the CDB, that now is not going to happen. The bids are going out in December 2020. That won't happen until May 21. So that's going to be a little bit of delay, but the C Lot is good to go. You're going to start seeing it pretty much right after May, right after graduation. It's going to go.
Thank you. Yes, Catherine? What's your question?
Sorry, the mute button is tricky. I have no questions.
You had your hand up, but no questions? That's, you're swatting flies or something? Just wanted to make sure you were paying attention. Somebody else? Any, yes, ma'am?
Is there any update on the cabbie building?
Dagged on it? No. And really, not only no, but just a whole lot of silence about every capital project, right, that is connected to the new budget. It seems as if, on a totally separate level, in a separate subject, my daughter-in-law happens to be a part of a nonprofit group that does a lot of lobbying, both in the city of Chicago, but then down in Springfield. And she was in Springfield last week. And everything is focused on the ballot initiative for the revenue from the, what's it called? His, his revenue plan, the governor's big revenue plan that's going to be voted on. Isn't it the tiered tax system? What's that, what's it called? Is it graduated tax? Bob, do you know what it's called? What's Pritzker's?
I think it's called the graduated tax.
Yeah. So she was just saying, everything is focused on that. I mean, all of their work is focused on, because that will determine in part how much money they need to borrow to start these other projects, and what income, you know, what revenue they can count on. So until we hear something from the state, we are in, on a holding pattern. And it was sort of, let's do a bunch of work, just in case, right? And so we're glad, because while we're not exactly shovel-ready, we could, we could work ourselves into being ready to go out to bid pretty darn fast, once we know. But it's a question on everybody, on every president's mind. The CFOs are chatting among themselves and just aren't, nobody's hearing anything yet. That's not even a hint, right, Bob?
Yeah, I'm not hearing anything in terms of any additional funding, and it's based on the Access Roadway, the fact that it's going to take 10 months to even get a bid, even if we were to be approved this year, it may not be until two years before that building gets shovelled in the ground.
Yeah. So, no, we wait anxiously, yeah. Somebody else? Yes, ma'am? Yeah, thank you.
Can you, I know numbers-wise, what our enrollment looks like. Can you talk about how you feel about our enrollment and how we're doing compared to, I think we're still a little better than those community colleges, but does that sound good to you? Does it need to be better? How are we doing?
Well, I'd certainly be rather, I'd rather be explaining being up than being down. We, we had a better return on applicants than the previous year, and that's huge, right? To take applicants and turn them into actual enrollees is really critical, because we're going to probably have less people applying over time if there continues to be less graduates, right? If there is a fleeing out of the state, you know, which I think we need to temper with a little bit of reality, but we're going to have to keep looking at that. So converting more applicants into people enrolling is huge. I, I'm hoping that our retention efforts are somehow a part of this, because they're critical. If you can retain somebody from the fall to the spring, or the fall to the fall, the chances that they'll complete a degree, that they'll get some kind of goal met is so much more. But it's tough to track retention, because some of the federal numbers go way back to a cohort that started several years ago. We can track fall to fall. We can track fall to spring, and we really haven't made that big of an increase. I'm anxious to look at, at fall to spring, once we know, you know? And again, I'm very anxious to look at fall to fall, to see if we're making an impact, because that would be great to know. We are up. Most of that is around our dual credit. If you asked Mike about how long he can continue to make it rain there, you said perpetually. Is that, was that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you said forever?
Forever. It's going to go as long as every school sees some other school do something, and they're like, we want to have that.
Yeah.
And so as new schools start seeing other schools doing stuff, the competition's there.
Yeah, yeah. Now, when might legislation change about that? At some point, the four years, who are already encroaching in some other districts to begin to offer like courses, may make a play in this area. We're not inundated, you know, with the, with the four years. Northern, I guess, could come in and say, hey, we're going to grab some of that market. Right now, we are sustaining enrollment increases, which very few colleges, again, this year have had. Most have had, again, down springs, when we looked at the initial numbers that were coming in. Most of that is based on our dual credit. In terms of our credit-only students coming here, taking, you know, credits, not adult ed, continuing ed, you know, or high school, we were just about even. We were up a little bit in headcount, down just a fraction in credits, but pretty much flat. So if we can keep offering things to our high school students, if Mike can keep doing his job, and now that he's hired somebody who can run circles around him probably in terms of effectiveness, they keep doing their job, we will be okay. But it's going to, it's going to be a challenge. When we're doing our five-year forecasting, and we're trying to look at enrollment, we are not looking for these kind of continuing, continuing enrollment increases. It's not realistic to imagine that. Holding our own over the next five years would be completely bucking the trend that we see out there in the state. It's part of why we're going to have a tuition discussion with, with our board a week from Tuesday, and probably at least attempt to make a case for continually looking at incremental increase in tuition. There's tons of room for moderate tuition increases that will not outpace student aid like Pell Funding. We're giving out more scholarships. We're hoping to be able to recognize, what's the savings in books that we are now, per student, right on average, being able to help students realize, that would more than, you know, cover a tuition increase. And so we're going to make our case. The board will make their decision. But without tuition, moderate, ongoing tuition increases, even if we maintain steady enrollment, it's going to be very hard to keep doing the things that we're doing year after year. 3% increases in salary and wages across almost all of our employee groups means that the budgets, two-thirds of our budget's going to grow by 3% every year for the next several years. Those numbers tell most of the tale. So we either, whenever we grow, we have to substitute, we have to get grants, or some sort of innovation funding. But our bottom line, revenue, is not going to grow by 3%, even if we do tuition increases year after year. So, yeah. Thanks for the question. Somebody else? Hey, Don. I am going to the firefighters' ball. It's kind of like a Cinderella thing. You dress up in tuxes. Why are you asking me what I'm doing tonight? You're going too, right?
I heard you talking about.
Thank you. What are you doing tonight? I don't know. What are you doing, Don?
I will also be at the Fire Academy 2019 Fire Academy banquet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Fall firefighters are graduating.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to mention it. Thank you, Don. It's always touching. Family members, a lot of firefighters, EMTs, come from families. And so you've got dads and maybe moms who are firefighters, who are there to watch their sons, daughters graduate. It's a, it's a, it's a moving ceremony. I had to miss it last year. I'm glad to be back and going, have you been to one yet? Okay. They let you hold the hose, and they turn the water on, which is, so come dressed appropriately for that. There's a cash bar, though. I mean, just for the record, yeah. But it's a, it's a nice ceremony. You know, talk to firefighters. There was a student I was talking to, when was that? In the hall, or day, day before? Dad is a firefighter. He's here in the program. He's going to get his EMT, and then, and then get another certification, and then hopes to enter the fire, the fire science training program. Dad's been a Woodstock firefighter for some 20 years. And even though it gets tougher, right, the number of jobs in Woodstock has gone down, and sometimes, you know, you can still definitely be a firefighter across this country, but you have to move to a different town. His goal is to hang around and follow his dad's footsteps and be at that Woodstock firehouse. So very impressive young man that I was talking to. Oh, no, was it the game last night? It was somebody came up to Demetrius. He's a basketball player. It's all coming back. Yeah. What am I doing tonight, Don?
I was about to say that.
Oh, there you are. Yeah, wasn't, wasn't he an athlete?
He's a basketball.
Yeah, nice guy. And just happy to be, happy to be here. Where you been?
Working with students.
See, that's what you quickly say. Working with students, raising money. You always have an excuse. Good. Anybody else? Okay. Great. Have a great rest of your week, and thanks for coming, and welcome, new people. It's great to have you. Yeah.